Yeah, Father, we thank you for this day and the city in which we live, God has us this evening as we make our decisions. Christ, amen.
Amen.
This is the November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty, regular meeting of the Noonan City Council. You have the minutes of the regular meeting of November the tenth, two thousand and twenty. Before y'all entertain a motion, we adopt those minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We adopt as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Next, our items are board and commission appointments. My appointment to the Farmer Street Cemetery Commission needs to be on the next agenda. Mr. Kretko, you're next with an appointment also to the Farmer Street.
Next agenda, please.
All right, and you're also still up with Noonan Youth Activities.
That one as well, please.
All right, thank you. Ms. Jenkins is not here this evening, so if you'll put that one on the next agenda, we'd appreciate that. So, and also in your agenda this evening is annual report for the Planning Commission. This is for information only, so we'll move on to the City Manager Report. Mr. Kretko, do you have any?
I know, sir. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
All right, yes, and I'll echo those same comments. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I have nothing this evening under new business. Consideration of statewide mutual aid and assistance agreement, you have this in your agenda. Are there questions of staff? They're all known, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion approved.
Second motion is second. We approve as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried. The next is one that our employees will love to see, is consideration of the holiday pay resolution. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve as presented and say happy holidays, Merry Christmas to all of you. All those in favor, opposed, motion carried. Thank you. The next is consideration of a resolution to authorize the designation of the city clerk as open records officer, authorize the designation of administrative assistant to police chief as open records officer for the Noonan Police Department. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve as presented in the resolution. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried. The next is consideration of a contract award for the Link Phase A and B and Box Culvert. Phillip, so you have any comments on this this evening?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, obviously we want to recommend that the bid be awarded a little bit of Llewellyn Construction. Llewellyn has been our bidder, our contractor in the first two phases, and they've done an outstanding job. This particular bid, we do think there may be an opportunity for some value engineering in some negotiations. So I would like for the motion to include not only the execution of the contract, but authorization of a lot of staff to try to value engineering for some parts of the project. What we would do with the BE process, we would actually change, bring those options back to this body for you to decide whether you want to accept the change to the contract or not.
I'll make that motion as what the City Manager said.
Motion is second. Everybody understand the motion and the second. What we're doing here?
I do have a question.
Question?
Since their bid was considerably lower than the others, will that, how, I know, you know, that's business, but will we be able to have those value-added negotiations and contract modifications even with that lower price?
Well, what you do in a BE process, Captain Kretko, is you don't negotiate their unit prices. The unit prices are what they bid. We recognize their unit prices. But in a BE process, we may determine there's areas where we may be able to change the scope of the project, therefore potentially reducing price.
Okay, thank you.
That will be the process.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I'll call a question. All those in favor, opposed, motion carried. Thank you. The next is a MEEX cell, a power cell that access reserve capacity to the City of Noonan. On behalf of the City of Ophir, you've seen these many times. If you have any questions, staff, we'd be happy to answer it. John, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried. Thank you. The next is a hearing regarding the City of Noonan Code of Ordinances, Article Five, Section Three, dash one-one-zero, alcoholic beverages, action for suspension or revocation of business license, hash B, or number B, seventy-one oh eight, Callie a Foundry LLC, DBA Brickhouse, Michelle Lynn Larson, owner, licensee, license representative. Mr. Seers.
Your Honor, the Larsons are here and represented by counsel, but I do not see that he is here.
You do not see who?
Their counsel.
Okay.
Their lawyer.
Will the Larsons raise their hand, please? Yes, do you, and I'm going to ask this question through Mr. Seers, I guess. Do you know the whereabouts of your attorney?
Boy, I can have him about six twenty, so he'll probably be out.
This may be your attorney. Are you the attorney for the Larsons?
Yes.
Where, at that point, at the agenda, thank you for joining us, Mr. Seers?
Well, Your Honor, we had asked that if there could be some recommendations for some resolutions that the Larsons might put in place, but I haven't received those at this time, so I don't know if.
Mr. Larson, will you come up to the?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, your attorney, please.
No, your attorney, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And if your attorney will state his name for the record, please.
Evening. My name is Daniel Calamaro with the Clifton Law Firm. How are you?
All right. You've heard Mr. Seers?
Yeah, um, I thought we were supposed to speak, but, um, what my clients have done since we last spoke is they have purchased an online training development program for every single employee at the restaurant. They have all taken it. They are prepared to produce certificates of completion for every single individual that would speak to a couple of things. First of all, how to identify and, I suppose, manage a relationship with an individual who is under the influence or potentially under the influence. It would enable them to calm down those individuals in the event that they had been either over-served at another establishment, showed up over-served, or were otherwise in a position such that they were, um, they should not be served additional alcohol at the establishment. They have continued and renewed their commitment not to allow any individuals to remove themselves from the premises with an open container. That includes either the parking lot or any other, any other location outside of the restaurant. That has, uh, that was always a protocol, but apparently a few individuals had, um, had not complied with that. The, the training that we discussed, I believe, also allows them the, uh, the ability to continue to do so on an ongoing basis. So it isn't, it isn't a one-time training program. It is an ongoing training program that should, we would think, um, reduce the likelihood that an underage individual would be served with any kind of alcohol in the future. Obviously, there's, um, there's certain things that happen on occasion, but, um, but this would, this would, also, I think culturally, create an environment in which the individuals who work at the establishment understand their responsibilities and, uh, and can put those into practice in a way that, that makes sense both financially for the business as well as, um, as for the, as for the patrons. They have eliminated the sale of well liquor, so to the extent that people were, um, presenting themselves at the establishment for a potentially cheap alcoholic drink, that opportunity has, has been taken. So, um, the idea, obviously, would be that if you don't have well liquor, um, the, the patrons would be, the prices go up, for one, which presumably would reduce the likelihood for overconsumption, but it also might help attract a different clientele, which is another thing I know that we had discussed. I think, I think.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
What type of written policy manual do the owners have?
So.
Have you seen a written policy manual?
I have not.
Okay, we're, you're not going to be able to answer questions from the back because we can't hear you, and it can't go into the record, so if you'll come forward and answer questions, that'd be great. And then, Mr. Seers, at what point do you want to step back into this process?
I, well, I did, I, I think that we're getting here. I think that, that at this point in time, that, that I think you see the willingness to work. I think council needs to understand what has been going on to reach this point.
Right.
Uh, because, you know, between the City Manager and now, we, in, in the police department, there, there needs to be some impact. Now, of course, council has to determine what that impact is.
Correct.
Right, this is getting along the, but, but technically, you know, the best training manual that you have is the city's alcohol ordinance, all right? And, and if you recall, and I said this, uh, to, to him earlier, is if you recall, there was an establishment uptown in the Court Square that we had some problems with, and they were put on probation, and we actually made them monthly sign a certificate for a year that they had gone through the alcohol ordinance with their people, so that's it. But I, I think at this point, the, I can make this very short so the council understands what has gone on, if that's okay?
Yes, please.
And then, before we hear from Ms. Larson.
Okay, well, if you'll just answer my one question, Ms. Larson, you, if you'll state your name for the record.
Michelle Larson.
All right, thank you. And so you do have a written policy?
Yes, sir.
A training policy?
Yes, sir.
That includes the training of at service for alcohol?
Correct.
And how long has that been in place?
Since we've been open for ten years.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seers.
All right, now, if y'all do, Sergeant, if y'all want to just sit down for a second, I'm gonna go through this just very quickly. And I think council needs to understand that there's a little more going on, so. If you'll raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear affirm the testimony you're about to give before the council in this pending matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And will you state your name?
My name is Sergeant Jim Bennecke.
And what's your position with the city?
I am a sergeant, detective sergeant, with the CID Division.
All right, and how long have you been in that position?
Ten years.
And how long have you been with the city?
Seventeen years.
All right, would you give the council a brief description of the complaints and investigation you opened with regard to the Foundry Brickhouse?
Yes, sir. In February of two thousand and nineteen, a former employee came into the Noonan Police Department to file a complaint about her taxes not being right for two thousand and nineteen. During that investigation of trying to find out what happened with taxes being withdrawn, she stated that there were several other employees that were having trouble with paychecks as well as taxes being deducted from their paychecks. I made, and I interviewed several other former employees and current employees with Brickhouse, and they all stated that they had problems with paychecks, that Mr. Larson would give them either a paycheck to pay their pay, or they would give them a paycheck to pay a vendor that worked on a Friday night. And all of them stated that, that paycheck would, would bounce. They said you had to get to the bank right as he gave you the check, or else that check would bounce, uh, and you'd have to pay late fees out of there. As a result of that, I subpoenaed some, identified three or four bank accounts in Callie de Foundry name. The name on the accounts were Ms. Larson and a bar manager, Blackstone. I looked at those records. One bank actually closed the account on Callie de Foundry because of the amounts of bad checks that were being returned every month. They closed one account. Another account, I counted in one month, there's a hundred bounced checks on that account. In all the accounts that I did verify, all the accounts had bad checks several times during the month, at least eighty checks that were bounced on, on those accounts every month.
And were there warrants issued as a result of those checks?
Yes, sir, I did issue warrants for Ms. Larson and Ms. Blackstone. They were the signatures on this account.
And what are the status of those cases?
I have turned the case file into the district attorney's office and are waiting for indictment.
All right, did you have a conversation during that investigation with Ms. Larson about the operation of the Brickhouse?
Yes, sir, I did.
And what was the extent of that conversation?
Ms. Larson stated that, uh, her name was, she was the business licensee, but her husband, Matt Larson, is the one that ran the business. Ms. Larson stated that Matt would bring her a blank check to sign. She signed the check, and that Mr. Blacks, uh, Mr. Larson would distribute the checks at that point.
All right, and, uh, do you have any questions of him? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and Investigator Aaron Howard? Do you solemnly swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in the matter pending before the council? It will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, self-yog.
I do.
Would you state your name, please?
Investigator Aaron Howard, Noonan PD.
And how long have you been an investigator with the city?
Approximately four years.
And how long have you been with the city, please?
Uh, approximately ten years.
All right, and would you give the council a brief description of the complaints and investigation you opened with regard to the Foundry Brickhouse?
Yes, around January of this year, I received several complaints at the Brickhouse. They're selling drugs at this location and also serving alcohol to minors. I was told that several of the cooks there were selling drugs, and the waitresses were, were assisting in this. I started looking into it, and also found out during my investigation, a couple of weeks before that, an officer stopped a vehicle in the area of the Brickhouse, and it was an employee he, uh, up there, and he had evidence in the car that he was selling drugs at that location. So we continued to, to monitor that, monitor that situation, and then COVID- nineteen came, and we kind of, their business slowed and was not open. So we picked back up in July and began doing more surveillance there. We put undercover officers inside, and we was able to determine that drugs were being sold inside the, uh, the business. At that time, it was noticed that it wasn't employees. At that time, it was, uh, patrons of the bar. We continued to watch it. We ID'd some people. A deputy from another agency who frequents the bar contacted me and said that there is drugs being sold there. During my investigation of this, uh, one of the other detectives received a case about a sexual assault that occurred up there, and the guy that did the sexual assault was my primary guy selling the drugs. And, uh, so that, during that process, we was watching, doing a lot of surveillance there, and we'd see numerous patriots leaving with alcoholic beverages. They'd be highly intoxicated. You could tell how, they were walking. You'd see them discard their beer bottles in the parking lot, leaving with alcohol, get in the car and drive off. Some of our traffic unit has stopped vehicles leaving there that had the open alcohol that has admitted that it came from the Brickhouse. Shortly af- after all that occurred, we, they were having an event, and we, uh, I'm gonna move this mask, and I can't really breathe. They had an event there with a large concert. We sent several undercover officers in there, which one of the, uh, we used an informant in there who was accompanied by the undercover officers, and he was twenty years old. When they went in, they were not checked, nobody's ID was checked. They went to five different locations inside the restaurant and purchased alcohol from five different servers, or four different servers, to include the manager at the time, which was Ms. Blackstone, who he had dealings with. After that was concluded, we, we came back that following week and issued citations to all those, the manager and Ms. Larsons. I was, after talking with Ms. Larson, she said that she really doesn't know what goes on in the bar that her husband, Matt, handles the day-to-day over, at that location. That's pretty much the gist, gist of what's going on over there.
All right, and so.
Mr. Seers, is that, the question, you just said at that location, is there another location?
I think Ms. Larson has an insurance agency that's almost next to Dover or next Dover.
Okay, there's not another alcohol license location?
No, no, no.
Thank you.
I apologize.
That's all.
All right, as a result of that, then, were there citations issued for furnishing alcohol to a minor, to Ms. Larson, and to Ms. Blackstone? And also establishment to be kept in an orderly, orderly manner? And for consumption, or carrying the consumption of beverages off the premises?
Uh, correct. There was also issued a noise violation. They've had multiple complaints of that, and on that night, they got a complaint at one forty-five in the morning, and the music was supposed to be turned off by ten, and they were issued a citation for that also.
All right, so did Ms. Blackstone, Ms. McCurry, and Ms. Smith enter guilty pleas to those citations in municipal court?
That's correct.
All right, and Ms. Larson's cases were continued, correct?
That's correct.
All right.
On what grounds was it continued?
Uh, she asked for it to be continued.
Okay, he just.
Right, I think her attorney asked for them to be continued. And they come up in two weeks, I think? Is it next week? Anyway, in the municipal court, they can get continued.
Sure.
So her case, all right. Do you have any questions?
Can we bring the mic back and?
Do you mind if I remove my mask, Terry?
Wonderful. Please.
The, 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 my main target at, at the, uh, at the establishment that was selling drugs, I arrested him there a couple of weeks later for CID. Mr. Larson asked that he be criminally trespass. He was my main target there. I did inform Mr. Larson that there was a, a male there that's participating in that with him, and as of that time, he asked for him to be criminally trespass too. That's still under further investigations, but not at the Brickhouse.
Were the, were, were the Larsons compliant with any investigation that you were pursuing?
At the time, when I spoke to him, they asked for, you know, how they could do better, and we, we've talked, and they were compliant during, during the whole process.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
All right, all right, just one more witness. Deputy Chief Cooper?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do you solemnly swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in the matter pending before council will be truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self-yog?
I do, sir.
And would you state your name?
My name is Deputy Chief Mark Cooper of the Noonan Police Department.
And how long have you been with the City of Noonan Police Department?
Twenty-two and a half years.
All right, now, uh, you've got in front of you a printout. Could you explain to council what that printout is?
Yes, sir, this is a CAD report from our call system. It was generated on July sixth, two thousand and twenty, and it covers a, uh, about an eight-month period, which it is showing sixty-four calls of service over a twenty-month period. calls of service over a twenty-month period. I apologize that it does cover a twenty-month period from January 3 of two thousand nineteen through September 2, two thousand twenty, and it shows sixty-four calls of service on the property of eighty Newton Station Drive, which is the physical address to Brick House.
And what are those various calls for?
Most of them appear to be dispute, non-family, which would be an argument, all the way up to a fight in progress. There's intoxicated persons. There's also a couple DUIs on here, but that probably is just a GPS location on our system that hits right there. And then welfare checks, which oftentimes we have had welfare checks on an individual who may be overly intoxicated, things like that.
And are you aware of two recent batteries that have taken place at that location?
I am, and those are not reflected in the timeframe of the CAD report. These are more recent than that. The first one would be on November, actually, both were on November 7, two thousand and twenty. Both are a Saturday night. The first one actually occurred on Friday night about eleven o'clock. By the time it was reported to us, it ended up into Saturday. The first one's a battery that occurred in the parking lot there.
And do you know the status of one of the victims in that case?
Yeah, that would actually be on the second one that did occur on the Saturday night. That was a fight in the parking lot. A large crowd of individuals basically jumped on another patron in the parking lot. That individual, I don't have a current status, but I do know that that individual ended up in the ICU unit of Grady Hospital.
And Mr. Sears, give us a date of that.
November 7, two thousand twenty.
Both of these were known?
Both were reported to us on the Saturday. The first simple battery, which would have been a simple fight, occurred on the Friday night almost at midnight. So by the time it was reported, the system picked it up on a Saturday. And then the following night, Saturday evening rolling into Sunday, is the big fight that occurred there. I would like to just make one mention. On the second fight on the Saturday night, Mr. Larson's staff did call us to notify us on that incident.
But Mr. Sears, this letter from the clerk's office to Ms. Larson was dated November the 4th. The certified letter we sent her, so this happened three days after the letter was sent?
Yes.
Is that what I want to make sure I understand? Okay.
Well, I don't know that she had received it, but it was personally served the next week.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. But you raise a good point, and I'll ask investigator Howard, what date did you conduct undercover? I'm not sure I asked that.
Let me get the correct date. The September 24th is what I have here, I believe, was the operation where the undercover officers went in there.
All right. And then citations were issued on the 26th, I think.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And I'll ask, do you have any questions of Deputy Chief Cooper?
I just, I have a couple. Do you know if your staff or you ever encouraged them to make the phone calls to the police officers in the event of an issue?
I personally, when I was a lieutenant on patrol shift, Mr. Larson and I had conversations back then. That would have been four-plus years ago. We had talked about it back then when an incident had happened. They did get a little bit better. The staff would call. And recently, Mr. Larson and I have had conversations on the phone, and we have, I have personally encouraged him to do that. I would imagine, but I can't testify to a hundred percent certainty, that our staff has encouraged them to help us curtail a criminal element on their property.
Do you have any feel, and obviously this is, what would you expect a similarly situated establishment? Like, how many phone, what kind of volume would you expect from a different kind, or a similar restaurant, but just in a different place?
The only one that I can speak to with great knowledge is the one that used to be called JJ Baja's on Twenty-Nine North, right at the bypass. It's now closed per an investigation that I did and presented to the council, and they actually surrendered their license and shut down. That's the only one that I have personal knowledge of.
Okay. You mentioned the second fight on November 7.
Yes, sir.
Do you know if the Brick House was open at the time?
If you let me review the actual narrative of the report, I didn't read this.
Yeah, sure.
It's actually the, give me just a second. There is no indication whether they're open or closed in the narrative of the report, sir.
Do you know-
And actually, I can say that there is comment that a Mr. Kyle Green, who is the bartender, verified some of the information provided. So I'm not sure if he was just on the property that evening, or if he, you know, if the bar was open. There's no establishment note.
Do we know if they were patrons of the bar, or were they just-
It just says they're on the property, sir.
Okay. I have no other questions.
That's it.
All right.
Thank you. And I would just point out for the council, as far as the city's record, is that Ms. Larson in two thousand twenty was both the licensee and licensed representative at that particular location on the application. So, all right? We're done. That's the city.
Do you have any response? If you'll come forward.
Yeah, Ms. Larson would like to respond.
Besides talking to the investiga-
Mr. Sears?
I'm sorry, your name.
If you'll raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear affirm the testimony about to give in the matter pending before the council be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, self-deprecating?
I do. After speaking with what he had talked about, I mean, we have ta, I've been thoroughly involved in trying to make some changes over there with regards to the program that Daniel had discussed with you guys. We also are waiting, unfortunately. We did sign a contract with Relico for cameras. We have them inside. Stuff happens outside, and we're finally going to be able to get the cameras, but it's not going to be until our contract is like December 4th, where they're going to be able to record everything in the parking lot patio side of the building. That can go straight to the police station. Besides retraining our staff that serves the alcohol, we also did make some management personnel with one of the individuals that unfortunately did get cited for the citations no longer with us. We do have a new bar manager that started in October.
Ms. Larson, may I ask you, would you, would it bother you terribly-
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Hold the microphone closer, too, and it may help.
Move it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do I need to start again?
No.
Okay. So you heard about the cameras, that we are going to have them in place, so to help the police if, God forbid, something did happen. As Daniel had said, we are trying to attract different clientele, get rid of the cheap alcohol, avoid overindulging. We have our incident log, so if anything occurs inside or outside of the building, the management and staff knows that they're supposed to report what they saw to make it easier for the police officers.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Go ahead, sir.
How many employees do you have?
We have thirty-five plus, and we, more than half of them have been with us for ten years.
Okay. So how, what percentage would be part-time versus full-time?
I would say, you know, we have some of the kids that are on the work program are part-time, and those would probably be about, there's about six of those, and everybody else is full-time.
And all of these are over twenty-one?
Oh, yes. We have moms, single moms, dads. Our cooks in the back are single dads. Bartenders are, like I said, have been with us since, for ten years.
What percentage of your business would you say is food versus alcohol?
Is food versus alcohol? I'd probably say sixty, forty. Sixty alcohol.
Food to alcohol?
Yes.
Okay. Do our records indicate that? Our quarterly?
I haven't seen the quarterly records. If they did not, well, I'll say if they did not, I can assure you that Ms. Klein would have let us know.
Okay. Does the Brick House pay us quarterly on time like they should?
To my knowledge, I have not heard from Ms. Klein, as Mr. Sears said that they haven't. Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So what, so all of these employees that have been there for this length of time, how do you refresh their training? You say you have a written policy manual, but how do you actually, not what you're doing since all this happened, but before all this happened, how often do they have refreshed training?
Well, they always have a monthly meeting to go over what we need to do, and making sure people are, they're carding, making sure they're watching for indicators. If there's somebody that comes in there that we know is a, has been there in the past and has been trouble, they're supposed to go to notify the guys up by the door.
But you have actually been there to run that training? Who's been running the training?
Well, we did have our prior manager, but she's no longer there. Now, we have the girl that used to, that has worked with us part-time, who has moved up to full-time.
Okay. Other questions from council?
Yes, sir.
Did you have any kind of a training program prior? I believe you said you did have a training-
With employee manual, yes. We have when they get, when they have to fill out their application, they have to come in for training. Yes.
Do you have documentation that shows-
Yes, at the restaurant.
Everyone who was in the training, others, if they didn't attend the training, how did they get that training, if everyone was-
The managers have to go ahead and make sure that they're all properly trained, and they have to take a test. And then I had instilled, after speaking to the gentleman over there, about the online, the three sixty to serve on premises, and it's a three-hour program that they need to take, and they all did complete that for me.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
I just have a question for Deputy Chief Cooper. So I understand there were sixty-three calls in a two-year time span, or the eight-month timeframe?
If I remember the notes that I have on the call log, it's sixty-four calls in a twenty-month period that spanned from January of two thousand nineteen, and I believe it ended at the beginning of September, which would have been when we began the initial kind of ramp-up of the investigation.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Larson, so my question to you is, with that amount of volume calls, you were aware of there was ongoing concerns and issues, correct?
Yes, sir.
And so in that timeframe, based upon the manual that you have or whatever, were there refresher courses in the manual and a encouragement, hey, we got to step up, and we got to notify, we got to improve? Was any of that in play?
And to try to keep any of the clientele that seems to be a, somebody that can get aggravated easily, to keep them out or to get rid of them before anything was to happen, as you know, to have them leave the establishment.
So in your opinion, you were guys were, with those citations or those calls, you were doing what you felt you could do-
And a lot of times, we made those phone calls, too.
Okay. All right.
Anyone else?
I have a question. You referred repeatedly about training.
Yes, sir.
Are we talking specifically alcohol-related training, or what kind of training? Is this just general food prep?
Alcohol, food, new menus, how to take care of a client.
So of all the training, about what percentage of that is actual alcohol-related and alcohol-serving?
Seventy percent.
Any other questions from anyone? Mr. Sears?
Do you have anything else?
No, I would just add that we do acknowledge that there have been incidents of, excuse me, of underage consumption on the premises. There's no defense for it. We don't offer a defense for it. What we can offer is remediation for it and a commitment that it won't continue to happen. There's a lot of people who work at this establishment who are good people, who, whose employment is dependent upon, on the establishment remaining open. And I think with, to say nothing of the fact that presenting yourself here today obviously adds a level of importance, if I may. The Larson's are under no misinterpretation of the seriousness of this. They have communicated it to their personnel, and they will continue to do so on an ongoing basis. One of the things I think I mentioned, but I do want to stress, is that the training that they're giving their employees to identify and ultimately remove patrons who are either close to or have been over-served, I think will go a long way towards reducing any potential further incidents. I think that remediation probably, perhaps it was overdue, but that, as well as the, I think, the cultural impact that this kind of experience has on them, will ensure that these problems do not continue to present themselves.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, Mr. Sears?
Just to, this is a record, the city's supposed to maintain a hearing record, so that's copies of everything that they testified to, and I'll give. The only thing I did make a copy of was what Mr. Cooper had, and I'm going to talk to that, but it didn't hear any rec. Now, of course, council knows with the memo that was sent out previously that the council has basically four options, all right, well, five options. One is to do nothing. One is to place the license on probation. One is to suspend the license and enter probation, or to revoke the license. In addition, if you recall, we did go back some three years ago, and we added another provision where council could fine up to a thousand dollars per violation, in addition to probation or suspension. All right? So you can suspend for a week and put it on probation for a year, or you can put it on probation for a year, or you could revoke the license, or you could fine up to one thousand dollars per violation. And I think what we had was five violations. So, I mean, that would be essentially based on the citations. Now, there's some other things that were involved, but at least based on the citation. So those are the options under the Section Three, 110 of the ordinance.
Thank you. Just want to say before we discuss that, how serious we all take this. This is, this is not a, alcohol license is not a privilege. I mean, it's a privilege, it's not a right. You don't have just the right to have an alcohol. You have it because we grant that privilege to you. And we find it very difficult to sit here and listen to the issues that have gone on in an establishment over this long period of time that seem to continue to be going on. So we need to take some action here, and with opening up for discussion, Mr. Sears will not make a recommendation to us, but we will, we will make our own judgment and decide, you know, what we want to do. We, some of you have been here in the past when we have had these come before, and others of you have not. But it's all, and there have been an array of different punishments, if you will, that we have decided. And so tonight, based on what you've heard, is we just need to sit here and decide among us what we think that level is. And you've heard Mr. Sears describe what they are. Certainly, probation would be one of those, and a suspension for a period of time, in my mind, to start that, that period would be appropriate also. And a suspension for a period of time, in my mind, to start that, that period would be appropriate also. I don't know if anyone feels strongly enough about it for revocation of the license. If you do, please speak up. This is your opportunity to share those feelings.
I do say a fine is also in order.
Yes.
Depending on how it goes. My question about it is the probation. The alcohol.
Excuse me.
We also are having other.
I can't, I cannot hear. I can't hear him.
We have a, if we did a probation, the alcohol is a revocation of that probation, whatever. What about those other things where they're having incidents there with the police? Is that part of that probation if you did that? You know, where they have any rowdy, uh, noise, all the other things? Well, obviously, anything that's a violation of, of the alcohol ordinance would certainly be.
Yeah.
Now, there are other violations, uh, of city ordinances and state law that are perhaps not, uh, alcohol-related that would fall under keeping the premises in an orderly manner. So, yes, there, there are situations besides serving to minors or, or not paying, you know, the fees, not paying the taxes, uh, that are basically alcohol-related that could, uh, initiate something. And of course, that generally comes from a recommendation to, uh, from the police department to the clerk, depending on the level of what it is. Of course, this level got high to this point, all right? So, you know, people do make mistakes, so it's, it's, it's what you want to make sure is and not making that same mistake over and over. And I'll just say this, that I think, uh, that Investigator Howard had mentioned this to me and, and for this. Part of the problem happened that particular night was because the waitstaff thought the bouncers were checking IDs when the people entered. Well, the bouncers weren't checking IDs. So anybody who was in there, so I'm suggesting that it's not just the waitstaff or the bartenders, but anybody associated with the operation needs to understand what the alcohol rules are. So, you know, that is not an excuse because under the ordinance, when the waitstaff served, it's a violation. Had they asked for an ID and been presented an ID, that is a defense. All right, but apparently they thought bouncers were checking when they admitted people and they weren't, at least in this one particular instance.
And that goes back to training.
Yeah.
That's what we're talking about. Okay, so revocation unless someone raises their hands off the table. All right, so we're talking about a suspended license?
I, I.
Trying to get agreement here, so.
I, I'm thinking of a suspension of license for a period of time. Did I jump ahead or?
Okay, no, we're, we're trying to whittle it down to what we're going to do.
I was thinking, I was thinking of a probation. The reason I was asking that question was not only the alcohol part, but the other things with having a rowdy establishment where they were constantly having problems also dilates that probation.
I, I don't want to do a suspension of, say, a month because I feel that that would kill a business, in my personal opinion. But I'm thinking maybe a week of the license and some probation. I think if we pull the license and fine it, I think that's, you're starting to get, that's too much. But I'm thinking a probation period and a suspension of license. I would, uh, kind of, kind of weigh in here.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm, I'm a little bit torn because, but, but I do understand, first, let me start off with your, uh, to me, it all boils down to the personal responsibility and it seems like, um, everybody assumes somebody was doing their particular job and nobody appeared to be doing, having oversight. So that is a bit of a concern. And also I'm torn from the idea that you have people who have been there for ten years, which is, that's their livelihood. And so, um, somewhere along the line, I feel they're bearing the brunt of, of the lack of responsibility on, on you as a, as an owner. So that being said, I would be more for, uh, along with George Line of, of, of a suspending, uh, the alcohol, but you can still serve food. Am I understanding that correctly or that's just? Yes, so sixty percent of your business is food? Is that clear? And then with a probation, but with some stipulations in the probation, they have to meet certain criteria, that training and reporting and things of that sort that shows us or, and, and really demonstrates that you understand the severity of it. And number one, the responsibility that you have to your employees is, is the most important thing, particularly in these times. I mean, that's, that's hard for me to, to swallow based upon what I heard, quite frankly.
And that, that is what we have done before during that, uh, suspension period. There's a required reporting mechanism put in place that is the, the Newton Police Department is the recipient of that reporting. And so that, so what our thought pattern is there is that it puts you into a, a habit of doing certain things in a certain way for a period of time. And then hopefully after the probation is over, you'll continue to do those things in that way that provide us, that provides a safe environment for your customers and, and, in which your employees can make a living. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Down here. Uh, with that being said, um, and I don't know what, uh, the other council members have in mind, but, but I would kind of think something to the effect that a probation through, uh, maybe December fifteenth and, uh, work on that. But I'd also be interested in hearing from, uh, the, uh, barkeepers there that, and, and their attorney as to what sort of, uh, not a deal, but what sort of probation or action they feel is, is fair to them.
Well, what, they're not here this evening that I know of, but what Mr. Bo would do, with all due respect, their, their feelings aren't involved in.
Well, no, no.
We, we, we've got to make a decision based on the facts and, and what, what I would like to see is a suspension for a week and then probation for a year. And probation doesn't mean you can't sell alcohol. The, after the week suspension, you get your alcohol license back. But during that twelve-month period for the entire year of two thousand twenty-one and going forward into the rest of, of two thousand twenty, but the entire year of two thousand twenty-one, there's a, there's a week, a monthly report that's given to our police department based on what you've done on training. And, and again, in order to instill with you and your employees and your management a habit of doing what they need to do to, to include a, a safe environment for not only for yourself, your employees, but your, your customers.
I'm fine with one week, uh, suspension and I was thinking six months, but I'm also fine with one year on probation.
I thought one year and I wasn't going to suspend, but I also wanted to add a two thousand dollar fine.
If I, if I can make a comment, um, my concern is that, Ms. Larson, your name and character is on the license, but you really don't have much to do with the business. I want to know that Mr. Larson is completely bought in on all this. He hasn't spoken to any of this, uh, because he's the one that runs the day-to-day operations. He's running the, the restaurant and the bar, I mean, the whole, the whole operation. And that he understands the severity as well. I mean, I, I understand you, you know, and your counsel. Um, I want to make sure that he's completely on board with this. You've had the restaurant for ten years. This has been going on roughly since February of nineteen, at least the, the beginning of this incident, which is going on two years now. That's a good part of the time that this business has been open. And so, and you've had employees for over ten years, ten years roughly. They should know, you know? Again, with your, your training, your recurring training, I, I see a, a fundamental deficiency and that's concerning to me.
Mr. Larson, would you like my comment?
Yes.
If you'll state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you'll state your name, please.
Matthew Larson.
You side with Swear of Testament, you've had to give the man opinion for the counsel, be the truth, all truth, none but the truth. I hope you got it.
I do. Um, I am there every day and mostly every night and, um, we, we started this together. We work together every day. So we're both on the same page and, believe me, I am, we have these forty employees that even though, um, a week is, is going to be a lot for them at this, at this time to be, not be able to work because half of them are bartenders and there's nothing to really bartend. And we all know that the food part of it's going to be, you know, we do sell a lot of food. I think a lot of people have eaten there before. I mean, we do sell lots of food, but they kind of work hand in hand. Um, but the severity has always been, and I think that I've expressed it to Mark and I've expressed it to Aaron when we met together and I've talked to them on the phone a few times since then about how severe I understand that, that what's going on. So, and we, we didn't wait, we didn't hesitate. And over the years, um, it's been a little bit tough with the parking lot and trying to navigate that and, um, it's been tough. We are a, we do play live music and it's been a habit of ours for a long time, which we like live music and people come and enjoy it. Unfortunately, there's some people that take it out into the parking lot and they, they, you know, and we do have to call the police sometimes. I never, I told this to Mark on the phone the other day, I never want to feel like I shouldn't be able to because we feel like we should be able to call them anytime because we need, when we call them, we actually need their help. We're not calling to, just for them to come up there and do our job. We're trying to get rid of the people that don't belong up there. And I think we're on the right path right now in doing that. And this isn't just two weeks old. This has been for all of two thousand twenty, even though we were closed for a month and a half, um, during COVID. We've been working on it all year long. It's not just something just started now. But there's only so much we can do. And I think these cameras, even though you think it's that big of a deal, you probably not, but if you're around there, you know, the outside parking lot area has been an area where people, we don't know who's coming or going. We really can't monitor it. We own, um, the parking lot across the street at the Goodyear. We own, it's shared parking through the movie theater. It's, it's all over the property and, um, this is going to help us out a lot. So the steps that we've taken so far, I think, are, are really good ones. And the, as far as, as long as the staff goes, the ones that have been there a long time, believe me, they're, a few of them are the ones that got, got violations. So it, it didn't, it didn't spare a person that's been there one week or a person that's been there seven years. The lesson, I think, is, is, is learned. And if you talk to somebody who's gone in there lately, hundred percent carding has changed the, already has changed the culture inside the building.
So with, with that, um, I'd be okay with a suspension till the end of the month, the one-year probation and potentially a thousand dollar fine. But again, I don't want to put you out of business either. That's not the point here.
No, no, I, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that. Um, it is our first violation ever on our liquor license in ten years in the county and the city. That's the only thing that, has there, maybe have been another one since, you know, maybe we deserved one, but it is our very first violation on our liquor license in the county and in the city.
Well, I will say the same thing to you, Mr. Larson. I said to a, to one of the owners in, in our downtown area when she was before us, don't, don't be back here.
No, no, I don't want to come back.
I mean, we, we'd like to see you, but if you're ever before us again on this issue, it's going to be a lot worse than it is today.
No, sir, I never want to come back, ma'am.
She took us to heart. Again, this is not a right and we will take it away in a heartbeat.
I don't, I don't ever want to see Aaron. I told him I like him and everything, but I don't want to see him there ever again, so.
Mr. Mayor, will you entertain a motion?
Well, I think I have one for Mr. Kretko.
I'll make that a motion.
Same motion, but.
I'll make that a motion.
Second.
So my motion is, uh, suspension till the end of the month and then beginning December thirty-first, the one-year probation. So that will take it to November thirty-first or November, the end of November of two thousand twenty-one and a thousand dollar fine.
As a motion.
Second.
I'd like to amend that motion to a two thousand dollar fine. I think two thousand, this is more severe than the other time. I think a two thousand dollar fine is more in order. We've had a lot of investigation, a lot of time involved.
Uh, I, I disagree with the two thousand. I'll support the one.
All right, I, I have a suggestion to amend, but I don't have a second. That, that I know of. All right, I'm going to call the original question then. Mr. Sears?
Clarification.
Procedure?
Well, point of, of thing, normally you have to give the written notice of the decision. So now, the question is, would they accept? Because the police department would show up at nine o'clock in the morning, uh, on Wednesday through the holiday weekend to take the license if it's going to be suspended until Monday. That's not quite so.
May, I wanted to ask the question, does the time, does the clock tick from when they receive it or does it start today?
Well, it depends on your motion. That depends on your motion.
Well, that's, that's why I said to the end of the month.
So that, so you're saying they would receive it back under your motion on December the first, Tuesday, December the first?
Correct.
Okay.
As long as it's surrendered.
Immediate, immediately.
So starts, I'm a little bit confused, it start today?
And the only reason I say that from point of clarification, they're in business going right now. And, and to have, you know, because what they're going to have to do is under this, they will have to put some kind of barrier up, uh, where the alcohol is stored on the bar. All right, now, different people have done it in different ways. You know, I think that one we had uptown did it with, with, uh, survey flags. You know, it put a big X across the bar. We've had to do that.
So you're suggesting there's a logistical issue involved in this?
It's a logistical thing for the police department because they have to go pick up the license.
All right, Mr. Kretko, I, I would kind of make a recommendation.
Sure.
That your motion include, uh, delivery of the suspension for one week on December the first?
Correct.
Tuesday morning, December the first?
That's fine.
And for a week suspension?
I'll make that my motion.
On December first to December second.
Yes, for seven days.
So that gets you through the holiday weekend.
Okay, so would our first day be closed, it'd be December, well, first day of no alcohol is December the second?
December the first.
No, first, I'm sorry. Tuesday the first?
Right.
Okay.
Until the following, through the following Monday.
So not quite the next Monday.
So no alcohol from the first all the way through this, end of the seventh?
The seventh, yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
That's your motion.
That's it, that is.
Okay. All right.
I'll second.
Any other discussion on that, Mr. Sears?
And, and the reasoning, and as part of the motion, the reasoning behind it was because of that that it's presented tonight with regard to the violations that were taken.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so everybody understand where we are.
I'll ask in a row.
Okay.
Just so that we understand on our end, is there a monthly report that you're going to require?
Yes.
And is there a update to the counsel that you want at any time?
We'd like to see that you receive the report. Yes.
But so through the chain is fine with y'all at this point?
Absolutely.
So that win my motion with the monthly report? Uh, and would it be appropriate for at the, at the end of the year, a closeout report to the counsel?
That's correct.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so again, discussion, questions? This is unusual for us, so I want to make sure everybody's comfortable with what we're doing. All right, all those in favor? Posed, motion carried unanimously. Thank you for being here today. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a consideration of an ordinance to extend the temporary ordinance to encourage business within a portion of the city's central business district and other businesses. Is motions before you? I mean, this item is before you, is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
I agree.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Thank you. The next is a continuation, this is consideration of a resolution approving issuance of a multifamily housing revenue bonds by the Thomaston Housing Authority. You have a report that was sent to us in advance, uh, that is entitled the East Gate Apartment Security Plan. And if, if there are any comments regarding this, uh, if not, uh, we'll accept this as their security plan and their report. And I'll entertain a motion on the resolution.
Make a motion to approve the, uh, resolution. Second.
Motion is second, adopt the resolution as presented and, uh, accept their security plan as their report as part of that.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion?
I had a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the security plan was from hours from seven to three in the morning. Um, if I remember correctly from, uh, was it Deputy Chief Cooper at the last meeting or Chief? Most of the calls or a lot of the calls were from like two to four AM? If I was, if I remember correctly, I'm trying to remember.
Uh, Mr. Kretko, I talked with, uh, Major Lee and the big one be into where they will stagger those hours.
Okay, so three o'clock will provide enough coverage?
Yes, I think that'd be sufficient. We stagger the hours, they won't know, they'll know what days are there, but the exact hours they won't. And I think that'll work.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have a. Okay, so I have a motion is second. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Thank you for being back this week, appreciate it very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing. This is an annexation request. Melissa Griffiths, on behalf of Lynchwood Cowida LLC, for 65.77 acres off Park Road, land lot number, parcel number 113105005, requesting zoning of RU7 for 106 single-family homes in consideration of ordinances. Ms. Donovan, how are you this evening?
I'm doing well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Before you begin with the planning commission report and recommendation before us, I, I would like to make sure that, that everyone understands the, the ground rules regarding what we'll do here this evening. So we'll have the planning commission's report and recommendation, we'll hear that. And then, then the applicant and those in support of the application will have 15 minutes to come forward and speak. Any unused time, they can certainly reserve. And then the opposition will have 15 minutes in total, not 15 minutes per speaker, but 15 minutes in total, the same as the applicant, to come forward and speak. So I don't know if you have, any of the applicants have coordinated their, their response to the application this evening, but if you haven't and you think you should, it would be an opportunity to do that so one person doesn't dominate the entire 15-minute period. Because it comes and goes and it's over at that point. So, Ms. Donovan.
Yes, sir. The tract is located to the east of Parkside Village and is contiguous to the city limits across Parks Road. The property is zoned RC, which is rural conservation in the county, and would currently be allowed a maximum density of .625 units per acre, which would permit 38 new residences. The applicant is proposing the construction of 106 single-family homes. The original application was actually for 118, but this changed as the concept was revised to address comments made by staff. The applicant has indicated that the homes will sell between 300 and 500,000 and are anticipated to be between 2,000 and 3,000 square feet. There will be an amenity center as well as a pool and walking trails on the property. In addition, the plan does show that there's 43 acres of open space being proposed. It should be noted that the applicant will also be seeking variances for minimum street frontage and lot width, asking, asking to go from 75 feet to 60 feet. Staff has completed the assessment of each of the eight required standards and I'll give a quick summary of each of those. Staff felt the use was suitable in view of the zoning and development of adjacent and nearby properties, since the site is pretty much surrounded by subdivisions and single-family homes. Lot size in the neighboring subdivisions vary from as low as 72, 60 square feet in Parkside Village to an average lot size of 1.8 acres in Turnberry Park. The density in comparison with the county would result in a difference of 68 additional homes. However, the lots in the city are allowed to be smaller because they are with sewer. In addition, Parkside Village's density is 2.3 units per acre, while the net density for the proposed development is 1.6 units per acre. And three of the four phases of Parkside Village is actually allowed a lot smaller than the 7,500 square feet that is being requested. In terms of adverse impact on adjacent or nearby property, the greatest would be traffic. The subdivision is anticipated to generate roughly 647 additional weekday trips per day. The county is, already has plans for improvements to both intersections of Parks Road and Lower Fayetteville Road and Parks Road at Popular Road due to existing traffic flow issues. The Popular Road intersection is currently in design phase and county staff has indicated that construction should be completed in the fall of 2022. In terms of the project itself, the city will require the application to, or the applicant, excuse me, to construct right turn lanes into the development at both entrances to help with traffic flow. In addition, the applicant is proposing 50-foot buffers between the subject properties and the two properties to the east and west. The city's current ordinance does not require buffer between the subject properties and the two properties that are existing that are single-family uses. So the proposed buffer will be additional protection for those neighboring properties. While there will be an adverse impact in terms of additional traffic, it will not affect the usability adjacent or nearby properties and the county's improvement project will significantly lessen the impact once they are completed. Could it be used as currently zoned? Yes, it could, is it be used as currently zoned? However, the developer would only be allowed 38 homes. Would the project cause an excessive and burdensome use of public facilities? In the assessment, staff conducted a physical impact analysis and sought comments from the service providers. That information is included in your packet. Physical impact, the projected annual expenditures is $70,577. Projected annual revenues, $83,520, with upfront revenues, which is during construction, being impact fees, permits, so forth, $247,623. In terms of traffic, again, a traffic study was conducted by the applicant to determine the subdivision's impact on Parks Road. The study showed that the northbound Parks Road approach to the Lower Fayetteville Road intersection will increase by about 16 seconds per vehicle during the AM peak with mitigate, without mitigation. And the southbound Parks Road approach to the intersection of Popular Road will increase by about 86 seconds per vehicle during PM peak hour without mitigation. The county has indicated that the increase in traffic will accelerate the need for improvements to the intersection. And as previously stated, they anticipate that the Popular Road intersection improvements will be completed in the fall of 2022. If the annexation is approved, the applicant has indicated that construction on the subdivision will not begin until the fall of 2021, with build-out being the fall of 2023. The applicant anticipates building roughly 35 homes per year. In terms of fleece, it's anticipated that the development will generate an additional 800, or 286 calls per year, which would, that includes alarmed calls as well. And Chief Meadows has indicated that his staff would be able to serve the subdivision. For fire, Chief Brown with the Newton Fire Department anticipates the development adding 15 additional calls per year. And he also indicated they could service the development. Newton Utilities indicated there's ample water or sewer capacity and a copy of that letter is in the packet. The engineering department, of course, wants sure all environmental concerns are addressed during the civil plan review. Cowida County will be the permitting authority for the entrances on Park Road and the city will be requiring right turn lanes at each entrance at a minimum. In terms of the school system, Ronnie Cheek has indicated that school capacity is an ongoing concern and has asked the developer to provide advanced notice regarding construction schedule, proposed build-out timeframe, phasing of the project and target market. The projected number of school-aged students from this development as build-out is estimated at 153 and that would be based on census data from 2018. The project will have an impact, however, all service providers have indicated that they can service the development. In terms of the comprehensive plan, this property is outside our planning area, but Parkside Village is shown as low-density residential, which our comprehensive plan defines as areas where four or fewer homes are allowed per acre. So this designation would be consistent with the zoning that is being requested. And in addition, our comp plan does identify a lack of available land as a potential issue for the city. The RU7 zoning designation is for higher residential development with more walkable neighborhoods. They are to be located adjacent to RU7 districts and serve as a transition between denser residential neighborhoods and less dense neighborhoods. In this case, the subdivision would be across from an existing subdivision with three phases zoned RU7 and would serve as a transition between the denser residential development in Parkside Village and the existing residential homes of subdivision within the county. Therefore, staff feels the development would be consistent with the purpose and intent of the proposed zoning. Would the proposed use be supported by newer changing conditions not anticipated by the comprehensive plan? If brought into the city with the RU7 zoning designation, we feel the proposed subdivision would be shown as future low-density residential, which would defined again as four units per acre or less and it would be consistent with the designation that Parkside Village has. Staff does feel the project shows a reasonable balance between the promotion of the public health, safety, morality or general welfare and the right to unrestricted use of property. As stated above, the surrounding land uses are all single-family homes, although the density will be greater than the majority of subdivisions abutting the tract. It is still less than the density, the density previously approved for Parkside Village. Also, the applicant is showing 50-foot buffers on the eastern and western sides of the property, which will provide additional screening. The greatest impact will be traffic and additional students. The developer will need to work with the school system to ensure that they can plan for the additional students. And in terms of traffic, there's already traffic flow issues on Parks Road, which is why the county has planned intersection improvements. And while the project will add 68 more homes than what is currently permitted on the site, 1.61 units, or 1.61 units per acre is not considered a high-density development within the city and the road should be able to handle the additional traffic once the traffic improvements are completed. And again, it's our understanding that the Popular Road intersection improvements will be completed in the fall of 2022. And again, the subject, subdivision construction won't begin until the fall of 2021 and then build-out be in 2023. As with all annexations, we have to, per annexation law, notify the county of the annexation once the city head council has decided to move the application forward in the public hearing process. The county reviewed the application and advised the city of their intent to file a notice to object based on the difference in density and a 22% increase in the current traffic volume to the subdivision on Parks Road. The county asked for a contributing, or a contribution from the applicant totaling $352,897, or 20% of the required traffic improvements at the intersections of Parks Road and Popular and Parks Road in Lower Fayetteville. And a copy of the notice of objection has been included as an attachment to the assessment. The parties attempted to resolve this dispute and even pass an extension resolution to give additional time to work through the issue. However, in the end, they could not reach an agreement and DCA was asked to appoint a resolution or arbitration panel to hear the objection. DCA refused to grant the hearing citing the expiration of the state mandated timeframe, which allowed the request to proceed to the public hearing process, that's why we're here today. During the discussions, the applicant did indicate that they were receptive to making a $60,000 contribution for transportation improvements, but not a $300,000 plus. Prior to the hearing before the planning commission, staff did receive a letter from the county requesting the commission to either deny the annexation application or require the applicant to pay 300,000 toward the construction improvements. And you do have a copy of that letter in your packet. So in summary, staff found that the development met seven of the eight standards. The planning commission, at their April 13, 2020 meeting, held a public appearing on the request and had a split vote, three in favor, three opposed, which means they did not give a recommendation on this matter. However, should you all elect to recommend approval of the request, staff would suggest the following conditions be considered: that the project would be consistent with the planned density, project data, amenities, proper conditions and elevated, elevation provided as part of this application; that the city will require right turn lanes at each entrance from the Parks Road into the subdivision; and that the subdivision will be limited to 106 units. In addition, at the planning commission meeting, the applicant indicated they were willing to proffer $60,000 for road improvements for their development's impact. And that's the report from the planning commission.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Donovan? Okay, I'll call on the applicant to come forward and state their, their case.
May I just remove this to speak? Thank you. Melissa Griffiths with.
While I'm speaking, I will note to you that it's 7:45.
Thank you. Melissa Griffiths with Horn &amp; Griffiths, 32 South Court Square, Newton, Georgia 30263. I'm here tonight with Mr. Marvin Bennett of Lynchwood Cowida. Mr. Todd Freeman already had family holiday plans, planned over a year in advance of tonight's meetings. He apologizes he could not be here. I've also got Mr. Neil Spradlin, who is a civil engineer for this project, and Mr. Vern Wilburn, who is the traffic engineer. I'm going to hold Mr. Spradlin for any questions you all may have specific to the plan or for any rebuttal time, if I may. Mr. Vern Wilburn, Wilburn will speak to the traffic study report and he'll explain to you how he came up with the $60,000 number that we're proffering based on his study and report. That is what he believes this project's contribution should be to traffic issues at the site. That's where the number came from. We have met with, extended staff with the city multiple times over this project and appreciate their time. I do want to point out that the project does have two full entrances that we are discussing. It is now with 106 lots. The applicant consents to all of the conditions that Ms. Donovan read out. I'm going to let Mr. Marvin Bennett briefly go through the photo renderings and the plan that we have and then have Mr. Vern Wilburn go with the traffic report. And then, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to reserve any remaining time for rebuttal if possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, cancel. I just want to introduce myself. I'm Marvin Bennett, 21 Dorset Court, Sharpsburg, Georgia. I've lived in this county for 30 years. I've raised a beautiful 20-year-old daughter. We're very proud to call Cowida our, Newton our home, even though we don't live in the city limits. And tonight's the first night I've been here in a while because of, sorry, of COVID. And it is, this is a beautiful town. We don't, we have been developing for 10 years, maybe. We, we built over 13 quality projects in this county. Bella Mason, Beaumont Farms. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. And we take pride in what we do. We don't want to throw up Cracker Box houses in the, in the city. So a city we're so proud of. So she explained it pretty well, better than I know it. So, but I just wanted to introduce myself, that, that we're local. We're not a public traded company coming in to just flood the market. We're proud of what we do and we'd love the opportunity to do something in the city. So, thank you.
If I could just finish by going through the pictures. So these are the exterior, as you know, as you noticed, they're brick masonry and that is hardy plank on the exterior that you're looking at. So no vinyl siding or anything. These are some that they have built elsewhere. Again, you'll see the nice landscaping as well. So these are all part of what's proffered. Again, these are going to be single-family homes with ownership, 2,000 to 3,000 square feet. It's going to be a custom-built home atmosphere. Each homeowner will get to help in the decision of exterior colors and what their, the interiors as well. That is why there's such a big price range that Ms. Donovan gave when she went through her part. Amenity center with pool and walking trails throughout. So now, if I could let Mr. Wilburn go through and talk to you about the traffic report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm Vern Wilburn. I live at 1864 Lower Fayetteville Road. Ms. Donovan summarized the traffic study very well. I'd just like to clarify a few things and maybe just add a little bit of detail. You know, you hear the, the daily trip generation thrown around a lot, but really what we're focusing on is the peak hour. We're concerned about the rush hour. And that's really where you'll see problems come up, if they're going to come up. And, and to give you an idea of how much residential development's generated, it's about in that one hour, that one peak hour, it's about one trip per unit. And those are primarily home-based work trips. So in the morning, most of that traffic will be going out. In the afternoon, most of it's coming back home. What that equates to when we assign that out, the, the heaviest movement was 30 vehicles an hour. And those were right turns from Parks Road on to both Popular Road and it was about the same up at Lower Fayetteville Road. It's not that difficult to make right turns out there because you don't have as much conflict. Problem is making left turns. And when you install the, the turn lanes, that means the one car that's trying to turn left, the right turns can get around him and go ahead and make that movement rather freely. And with that improvement, and with the additional traffic, it would actually work better afterward than it does right now. So that completely mitigates the impact of the development. Now, where the 60,000 came from, we evaluated both of these intersections as if they were roundabouts, as was proposed in the TSPLOS. Those were estimated at about $3.2 million of construction cost. And when we evaluated those with the existing volumes, we found that they'll work it very well. Levelled Service A, about five seconds per vehicle on average. Everybody going through. A, about five seconds per vehicle on average, everybody going through the roundabout. When we added that additional traffic in, the new delay afterward went up less than two percent. So when we took, it's actually one point eight five percent, I think it was, that additional delay, when we multiplied that times a three point two, fifty-nine thousand, or about $60,000. So that's where that came from.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Wilburn? All right, Ms. Griffiths?
If I could reserve the remainder of the time.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, this is the opportunity for anyone opposed to come forward, and I'll note that your time is starting at seven fifty-three.
I better run then, eh? Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman, for letting me speak. I won't be able to present. I wasn't allowed to. I did hand out handouts of the pages, and I will reference the pages, which might make it easier for you to follow along. My name is Rick Bevington. First, I want to say that we all do the polls on retaining Cowida's rural character. We all agree we should, and this is where the rubber hits the road. All right? This is how you retain Cowida's rural character. My name's Rick Bevington. I live at four seventy-one Parks Road. I'm speaking for all the contiguous properties to this development, various HOAs contiguous to the development, and both city and county residents. We support individual property rights and don't oppose annexation by the city. We do oppose this specific plan and ask you to deny the request. Why should you deny the request? Page four. Planning and zoning did not recommend approval, voted three to three. There are a considerable number of concerns raised during that meeting. We believe the staff assessment supports denial, although their conclusions are flawed. Page three, what is being proposed? This is very key. Hundred and six, I say $200,000 of homes. The developer will tell you they're 400,000 average. These are on seventy-five hundred square-foot lots. They're about 200,000 square feet, including garage. This is lots of small houses on very small lots. Three of you are real estate professionals. All of you have common sense. Data analysis of every subdivision in the area was handed out to council, and we can go into whether these are 200,000 or 400,000-dollar houses till the cows come home, but it is quantifiable. It's not a qualitative assessment, and you'll see why it's important. You're held to certain standards for assessment. One, is the zoning suitable to adjacent and nearby property? No, it is not. Turnberry, one point eight acre lots. Winchester, one point four acre lots. Noonan Neighbors, fifty to five acre lots. There's one place that it's similar to, which doesn't make it suitable, and that's Phase One of Parkside Village. Parkside Village is an outlier. Phase One is an outlier. To use that as the jumping-off point to create more outliers, I don't think is correct. Another standard you're held to is, does it adversely affect existing usability of adjacent property? You've heard about the traffic problems. It's a lot of obfuscation here. Simply put, it is unsafe today, and you know it is. You've been asked by the county to pay only eleven percent. I don't know why it's that. I think it should be fifty of the $3 million cost to make it safe. This will incur a three hundred percent increase in traffic. It's unsafe today. The city doesn't want to pay for this, by the way. Another standard you're held to is, are there substantial reasons you can't use this property as a zone? There are no reasons why it can't be used as a zone. They could build thirty-five nice homes like Bell Maison or Big Horn on that piece of property, and everybody goes home happy. The only difference is thirty-five times a unit of profit is a lot less than a hundred and six times a unit of profit. Another standard you're held to, will it carry excessive burden on public facilities? Your financial analysis uses an average-price home of $400,000. That is not a correct number. The correct number is $200,000. If you plug that number in and use all the other cities' numbers, you have a deficit of almost $20,000 as opposed to a net profit of $13,000. You have to rely on real numbers, not just numbers proffered by the developer. As far as use of the facility, the one noted bull traffic issue is that it'll increase, and he stated it, the wait at the intersection to one point five minutes per car. If you're number three, you're five minutes. And what happens? They jump out into the intersection, get hit. It's all downhill from there. My page eighteen has a summary of the standards of the, that you needed to measure this against. I'll use the same facts as the staff, but I come to very different conclusions. The other issues that we have are the wetlands. These are national inventoried wetlands next to and across these houses. The buffer requirements for these are not part of the concept plan. There will be a terrible squeeze to try to do this. This is a large hundred-year floodplain on top of the wetlands. There's a hundred-foot drop from the dam, and it may require a Class One dam. Are you ready to go into all that? Lastly, on closing, approval of the project is not in the city of Noonan's best interest. Assessment conclusions are flawed, and specifically, development is a financial burden on the city. Plan is grossly unsuitable for the area. City is assuming indeterminate liability for preserving federal wetlands. The city totally contributing to an already unsafe traffic condition. School trailers may be brought in depending on unknown demographics of the homes. County may leverage this into a payment of hundreds of thousands of dollars to improve road safety that the city would have to incur. And lastly, development will destroy wetlands, causing costs, litigation, and headaches for the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Dunavant. Next.
My name is Michael Boone. I live at seventy-two Turnberry Trace property, right next to the property that's being considered. I am the HOA president and speaking on behalf of our HOA, and I have worked with Mr. Bevington in presenting you these materials. I have materials that I, that was handed out to you prior. It was a package from October the thirteenth that was given to the planning commission, as well as a letter to you today dated November the twenty-fourth. The previous letter goes through four problems with this specific annexation, and it not only lists the problems, it also identifies the proposed remedies for those problems. In the October thirteenth letter, the first problem has to do with identifying and properly protecting these federally protected wetlands. And if you look on a map that's provided, I believe it's Exhibit One, and it's Page Two of that, you will see that this property lies at the head of a federal wetlands network. So anything that's built on this property has the potential to damage a network of federally protected wetlands throughout Cowida County and on. Secondly, the entrance and exits to this property would go over the wetlands, as would the sewer connection that would come from Parkside Village would have to go through the wetlands, which I would think that would require permits through the Army Corps of Engineers. You would also have an impact on the wetlands from retaining ponds that would have to be built, as well as groundwater runoff that would be coming from the subdivision. And the bottom line is, the more homes you build on this property, it's directly, the number of homes on this property that are built is directly proportional to the potential to wetlands damage. So that's why we ask that you limit the number of homes that are built on this property. We haven't, we have no problem with the annexation. We have no problem with homes being built on the property. We just want it done the correct way to preserve the wetlands and to prevent further traffic issues on Parks Road. There's also a protected species that lives in these federal wetlands that's identified in the letter from October the thirteenth. Information on that is provided in a fly, in an exhibit. I believe it's Exhibit Three. It's Exhibit Two. The letter today to you speaks of three things. Talks about the development's proposal, their dollars per square foot that they're anticipating getting from a 2,000-square-foot home on the bottom at $300,000 would cost $150 per square foot. At the top, a $500,000 home with 2,000 square feet would be $250 per square foot. A 3,000-square-foot home at the top of their limits at $300,000 would be $100 per square foot. That's reasonable. That's the only option that's reasonable, because once you move up to a $400,000 home at 3,000 square feet, you're looking at $133 a square foot, and the $500,000 home would be $167 a square foot. And what you will see in the analysis that I've done for you of three hundred and nine properties that are close to this proposed annexation site, you will see that there's only one development, Bell Mason, that got over $152 a square foot, and it's not even a comparable because it's the one that's the farthest away, and it has lot sizes that are greater than one acre. If you look at, in the summary on the, on today's letter, for Parkside Village, there were a hundred and fifty-seven sales from January first, 2017, to a few days ago. The average of those homes were twenty-eight hundred, a little over twenty-eight hundred square feet, and it went for less than $300,000, for an average of about $102 a square foot. So what you're looking at for them is of their, of their pricing plan and what their, the size of home that they're looking to build on the size lot they're looking to build, it's, it's not, it's not based on reality. It's not based on the reality of four years' worth of sales in this area. Secondly, the traffic flow study, you need to know that that traffic flow study was done during the school system's fall break of 2019, when traffic was lighter. You also need to know that I do not believe that the new traffic from Parkside Village, from the new homes that are being added there, has been considered into this traffic flow study, as they're adding homes there as well. I believe there are currently a little less than 300 homes in Parkside Village, and they have, I believe, a little less than five, a little less than 600 lots. So there's going to be considerably more homes built in Parkside Village that's going to contribute to Parks Road, not even including this proposed annexation. And what hasn't been considered, too, is that people have learned that Parks Road is an access point for the I-85 corridor now. People are learning that route and traffic is picking up. It's picked up considerably since this traffic study was done. Finally, in the, in today's letter, I listed, I provided the copy of the previous letter because it pertains, it pertains a lot to this because it has to do with the wetlands. It has to do with the sewer access, having to go cut across wetlands, the bridges over wetlands, the runoff from this subdivision, and the topography being changed such that you're not going to have the natural springs that you have that feed into the wetlands network. All of that needs to be studied and protected before we do anything with this property. And I just ask that you do that. I ask that you carefully consider all the materials that have been submitted, and please just take that to heart before you make a decision regarding this annexation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Appreciate you being here. Okay, we've got time, three minutes for any other person who is opposed to the application. There's three minutes left. Okay, so seeing no one come forward. Ms. Griffiths, you reserved several minutes.
Yes, sir. I'd like to just answer point, two of the points, and I'm going to have Mr. Neil Spradlin address the wetlands questions. Regarding the traffic study dates and numbers, in the numerous meetings that the city, the county, and the applicant had, based on COVID being in play, it was agreed to use the dates from November of 2019 because that was when everyone was at work and everyone was in school. We did not feel using dates after a shutdown had occurred when children were not in school and so many people were not working would be accurate reflection, so I just wanted to point that out of when those dates were from, because those dates had been prior to COVID, and the objection came after that time. So I'm going to let Mr. Neil Spradlin come up and address the wetlands issues, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name's Neil Spradlin. My address is forty-five Little Road, Sharpsburg. I'm a professional engineer in the state of Georgia. I've been working on land development projects for over twenty years. This project is very typical of many land development projects that I've worked on. It will be required to follow a well-established permitting process, which requires compliance with federal, state, and local rules and regulations dealing with all kinds of environmental issues, from soil erosion, stormwater runoff, water quality, and specifically, these sensitive wetland and streams that we'll be crossing. So there are three locations on this project where we will create some impacts to some wetlands, and there are two intermittent streams that we're crossing. To a lot of you guys, those would just look like a ditch, but it's actually classified as an intermittent stream. The wetland areas and the streams are all, fall under the jurisdiction of the United States Army Corps of Engineers, and they have a process by which they permit these types of stream crossings and wetland impacts, as long as it's within their parameters. The developer will be required to purchase some stream credits and some wetland credits. It's a, it's a pretty normal process that we go through anytime we have these kinds of situations, and it's very common. In this case, we have to cross these wetlands and these streams just to get access to the, access to the property. So with that, I'll, you know, if you guys have any questions, I'm glad to answer them, but like I said, it's a, it's a well-established permitting process that'll be reviewed and approved before any work is done.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Mr. Bradlin? Okay, thank you. Ms. Griffiths, you have two minutes left.
We just appreciate your time and the consideration of this annexation. I know there have been many requests that have come before this council that have not included single-family homes over the past twelve to twenty-four months. This is single-family homes. This is ownership, and it's within the city of Noonan. They will be following all of the ordinance requirements. Some of those were questioned, I know, by the two that were in opposition, but obviously they know they have to comply with everything with the city. We did start out with a hundred and eighteen prior to working with staff, and that's how it's been whittled down to a hundred and six, based on staff's comments and working with them to this point. So we just appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this ends the public hearing then on this issue. This is the issue of annexation of Lynchwood and Cowida LLC for 65.77 acres off Parks Road. I'll close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion from the council to accept the report and recommendation from the planning commission.
So moved.
Motion, a second, to accept the report and recommendation from the planning commission. All those in favor, you can take, by raising your hand. Opposed, like sign. Motion, carry. Thank you. Discussion or motion on the annexation and the ordinance that follows?
I have a couple of questions, or at least one. You propose homes that are 2,000 to 3,000 square feet, and they'll be built out as 300,000 to 500,000-dollar homes. I mean, what kind of guarantee that we have?
To whom are you posing the question?
What's that?
To whom are you posing the question?
Either to Ms. Griffiths or either one.
Okay. I'm sorry, I cut you off. Did you finish?
No, sir.
Finish your question?
No, sir.
Okay. I just wanted somebody up there to be all right with that.
And so what I'm saying is, I've been doing this for a while, and
Yes, sir.
And you hear all these things, but then all of a sudden, when it's built out, it's not a 300 or 500,000-dollar home. So I'm, I'm trying to, how do you convince me that this is actually going to be what you say it's going to be? Because once we approve it, I don't think it's written in stone that you have to build a 300 or 500,000-dollar home. But you're telling us that's how you're selling it to me, at least.
Yes, sir. So the plans are between 2,000 and 3,000 square feet per home.
Yes.
Right now, the other homes they are building are going for 175 to 195 a square foot in the county, and so they're using the math from that project and the other projects they have done and what they believe the market will bear. So the difference between the 300 and 500 will be dependent upon whether you choose a 2,000-square-foot or a 3,000-square-foot home, and then what addition That is what they are committing to do. We understood that by proffering the pictures, turning in pictures with the plans, you know, that those are conditions of the zoning that they are held to.
Right.
And so they're committing on the square footage, the amount of the price range that they're looking at, what the exteriors are going to be, the walking trails, the landscaping, the amenity center with a pool, and the two full entrances with that additional $60,000 that Mr. Wilburn's traffic study on the traffic, along with the turn lanes that the city's staff has recommended as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Follow-on question to that, if I might. Talking about that, what type of a ratio of the 300,000 square foot, 1,000 square foot homes are we looking at for the price difference? If you put 1,300 on there, but all the rest are 200, that's going to really skew the makeup and the landscape of that development.
And it depends on the buyers, Mr. Kricko. I couldn't, I would just be guessing right now to give you a percentage. We have no idea. That is the range. Obviously, they would want more, as many on the higher end as they could get as possible, but I wouldn't want to step out and just guess a number, because that's what I would be doing, sir.
Ms. Griffiths, does
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
Does Lynchwood-Kaweeta do their own developing of lots?
So they've got some different combination projects, Mr. Mayor. So they have developed some of their lots, and then they've joint ventured with some people to do developments of other lots. They've also gotten the lots ready and then flipped those lots to other developers. So it depends on which project you're talking about. They are hoping to, their plan right now is to build these theirself.
Is to develop the lots?
To develop the lots themselves, yes, sir. But there are other projects where they have joint ventured with others, but they understand, even if they, you know, joint venture with anyone, that all of the conditions and the pictures they're agreeing to would be in place.
Let's talk for a second about the cost of a developed lot.
Yes, sir.
In Kaweeta County. You do this a lot. What kind of numbers? I'm not asking for Lynchwood's numbers. I don't want to go to proprietary information for them. What kind of numbers do you see today as just the development cost, not the acquisition cost and development, but just development cost of a lot in the city of Noonan?
The lots in the city of Noonan, Mr. Mayor, would be higher, because you, there are no impact fees in the county. You've got impact fees in the city that you do not have in the county, but you also have access to the utilities that you don't have in the county. I'm not really sure how to give a number between the two, but it is significantly higher to build in the city than it is in the county.
Okay.
The last project that I work with, without giving proprietary information, the impact fees alone were over $1 million, just to be able to come to the table.
Is the, do you know enough about this project to tell us whether or not the sewer is at grade or going to need a pump station?
Pump station, sir.
So what's the approximate cost of the sewer system, including the pump station on this project? Pump station's what, 350 to half million dollars?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Just the pump station alone's probably 300,000, and then we'll have some gravity lines that take it to that point.
You may have a better grip on the answer than Ms. Griffiths either wanted to give or was able to give. A developed lot in the city, what number do you hear in that world of a price range?
Yeah, I would be guessing as well. I really would. I mean, I draw the plans, and these guys, you know, put the numbers to it and get the projects built. I don't know. Marvin, would you have a number in mind?
Development costs on sewered lots is 35,000 to 40,000, plus the cost of land per lot.
Right. That's just development cost.
So
35,000.
I would be guessing if I said what this particular one, but that's development cost alone.
So essentially, you're talking about having $50,000 in a lot, in a raw lot?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to review your numbers, please.
Mr. Bevington, you can, I'll give you a couple of minutes to do that. I know
I don't need that long.
Pardon me?
I don't need that long.
Good, good. Go right ahead, Mr. Bevington.
You know, you all hung up on this is a 400,000 or a 200,000 dollar house. This is not mystical. If you could look at the slides I handed out, I can't project, but they can. I'm not allowed to. You have a picture in your slide packet of this house. It's for sale today in the city of Noonan for $409,000 on Zillow. Okay, there's no comparison between this house and the five they can show you up here. Okay, none.
Thank you. Okay, time's up. Unless there's other questions, we're out of the public hearing, and we've had a motion of second in the past, adopting the report and recommendation of the planning commission. Looking for a motion on the annexation, unless there are more questions?
I'll make that motion.
All right, so I have a motion of second.
But I had a couple more questions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion of second. A motion of second is to approve the annexation.
Approve it.
Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so you had another question, Ms. Kricko.
Two questions. One was for the developer, and Ms. Griffiths is, if we kept the buffers and setbacks as per their ordinance, how would that affect the development?
I'm sorry, which buffers?
Sorry, you want to have the road setback from 75 feet to 60 feet, and potentially the house buffers?
Oh, you're talking about the variances that Ms. Dunham said that we would need to apply for.
Correct.
So are you asking me what the number difference would be on lot units if we didn't have those?
Correct.
That's a Mr. Spradlin answer. Hold on a second. Do you remember that calculation?
I don't remember. Well, if the lots are wider, obviously, there's going to be fewer, I mean, I'd say a 15% difference maybe.
He said a 15% difference, maybe, sir.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, I need to ask, to make sure that your motion included
Included with, yes.
Paying the $60,000 for the
Correct.
Oh, I'm sorry. That 60,000, as I understood from city staff, was to go to the city, not to the county, for transportation improvements, per our prior meetings, is what I understood.
Is that 60,000 in addition to the right-hand turn lanes?
Yes, sir.
No.
But if that's not
That particular intersection is under the county jurisdiction.
Okay.
Not in the city limits.
That's fine.
I would certainly
That's fine.
Part of that payment be made directly to Kaweeta.
That's just fine.
Yes.
That's fine. Thank you for the clarification.
And I have one other question. This is for those in opposition. I'll let either any of you take this up. It's on page 20 of your handout, this one here, Point E. It says, "City totally contributing to all already unsafe traffic conditions." I'm not sure how many people live on that road already, but if it's already unsafe, and you're saying that this developer needs to contribute $300,000, what the county is saying, would you be willing to contribute as well? I mean, if you're asking this developer to contribute everything for the development, a percentage, you're asking them to take on an undue burden, undue weight of the intersections. So it just seems a little contradictory that you're asking them to take on $300,000, and you are using the road, contributing to the already unsafe traffic conditions. So I don't know if that
Are you saying that the people who live on Parks Road are going to contribute to the intersections?
Correct, or the other subdivisions or whatnot. And this may be more of a hypothetical-type question, a rhetorical question. I do have one last question for the developer. Is this a covenanted community, or will it be?
Yes, sir.
And would you be willing to put within your covenant, potentially, a limit on the number of rentals of 12% or so in the community?
That would be fine, sir.
So 12%?
That'd be just fine.
All right. So are you going to amend your motion to include that?
I'm going to make the motion with the 60,000 and with the bullet point suggested, the three. Staff or staff recommends?
Without the rental.
Pardon me?
Without the rental.
With the recommendations of staff.
But without the rental requirement?
Oh, you want the 15%, what was it? Was it 10 or 15?
10%.
Whatever.
12%.
12%. Yes. With 12%? That's the motion.
Second.
Second. I have a question. How do you enforce that? How do you enforce the 12% rental when you sell it to an individual? They can rent their house, or they can live there.
It's only be able to be enforced, I'll speak to that directly, as being president of a homeowner association at one time. It's only enforceable as the management company and the company that the management company hires to oversee, and as much as the owners of the home are willing to contribute the information, and that it's really very hard to monitor, I'll tell you the truth.
But the HOA is in charge of it.
Yes, absolutely.
Management company. Okay, any other questions? I have a motion of second to approve the annexation with those conditions. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. I'd like a motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adopt the ordinance with those conditions. Is there a motion of second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, that ends our regular agenda. We do have a need this evening for executive session for legal issues. Mayor Pro Tim Alexander will take us into that.
Yes, sir. I move that we now enter into closed session as allowed by the OCGA 50-14-4, and pursuant to advice by the city attorney, for the purpose of discussing legal, and that we, in open session, adopt a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor or presiding officer to execute an affidavit in compliance with OCGA 50-14-4, and that this body ratify the actions of the council taken in closed session, confirm that the subject matters of the closed session were within exceptions permitted by the open meetings law.
Second.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.